Attending today's candidate forum, I am Connie Weisman and I am currently serving as a co-chair for our candidate forums committee this season. We are from the Legal Women Voters of Arlington Heights, Buffalo Grove, Mount Prospect, Prospect Heights, Elk Grove Village, and Wheeling. We thank the Indian Trails Library for allowing us space to host this free candidates forum for the community. Founded in 1920 out of the suffrage movement giving women the right to vote, the Legal Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports, opposes, or recommends candidates for office. The League's purpose is to promote responsibility through the informed and active participation of all citizens. We empower voters and defend democracy. Providing this forum allows citizens to become better informed about the issues facing the community and the candidates running for office. We are pleased to offer this service to you. As you can see from your program, we will be holding one forum this afternoon. The candidates running for the Wheeling Village Board. All the candidates were contacted by some combination of mail, email, and phone prior to today. The candidates have agreed to abide by the ground rules provided by the Legal Women Voters. Those rules are as follows. Candidates have drawn numbers to determine speaking order. The moderator will rotate this order during the forum for questions. Each candidate will have two minutes for their introductions. Next, each candidate will have one minute to answer all the questions. At the end, each candidate will have a one-minute closing. League members will act as timers. We have Mary and Jane here in the front row helping us with that today. Candidates will be given a 30-second and 15-second warning, so we ask the candidates to quickly complete their thoughts before they see the stop card. Time limits will be enforced out of respect for all the candidates. Questions will be provided by the audience. Each question will be answered by all candidates, so please, audience, ask questions that pertain to all. Again, we only use questions which can be answered by all candidates. League members have index cards. Lisa is standing here by the side. If you would like a card, please indicate you would like one. Questions will be reviewed for clarity, appropriateness, and to avoid duplication before we bring them up here to our moderator. Candidates have been asked to not interrupt one another. The moderator will repeat a question if asked. The candidates are to speak to the audience. Audience members, please turn off all electronic devices out of respect for the community and candidates. The forum will be taped for League use and education for the public. The candidates have agreed to this as well. Please do not videotape or take photos during the forum. We will post a link to our webpage as soon as it's available. And we thank Ben, who has volunteered to videotape our forum today. Thank you, Ben. Please hold all applause until the end, and please do not demonstrate in any way to show support or non-support of a candidate. League is dedicated to civil discourse and politics. Please help us with that mission. There is space outside of the room for candidates to speak to supporters after the forum, and campaign literature will be available on the table in the lobby. No campaign signs may be posted within the room. Please be respectful of all the candidates and attendees. I am pleased to introduce our moderator for today's forum, Ms. Catherine Williams of the Legal Women Voters of McHenry County. Please welcome Catherine as she comes to our podium.
Thank you so very much. I know we are facing some real challenges today. I think, is it NCAA something basketball? And then there's something about an Irish guy at St. Patrick's. So, I appreciate you all coming out today and spending some time. The League is always about education and information, so thank you very much. The candidates have drawn numbers. We do have one additional candidate that just got here, Deborah Wilson, so thank you, Deborah. Appreciate that. So, we'll go ahead and begin. And again, very, very important, questions need to be non-specific candidates. If Bob's your neighbor and you know that Bob is just really adamant about something, we need to give everybody a chance. So, that question may be rewritten so that everybody can answer that question. And so, they'll go in in rotating order. So, timers, are you ready? All right. We'll start here at this end, Ray Lang, with his opening statement.
Hi, folks. Thank you all for coming out today. I really appreciate being able to tell you a little bit about myself and some things that the village has been doing to make it a better place. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a lifelong resident of Wheeling. I've spent half of that time working in one capacity or other for the village government. My summers I spent in the water department from college. From, as soon as I bought real estate here, I joined the plan commission. Been on the plan commission for 20 years. I got promoted when there was a spot open on the village board, got appointed to that position, and two elections since, I've been on the village board for 10 years. So, I know Wheeling pretty well. You know, we've had a lot of successes with Wheeling. Some updates, the Wheeling Town Center is starting to really blossom. Things will be open there pretty soon, in August and so on. There's development happening next door to Jack London. That'll start coming online fairly soon. And I tell you, you can't do this alone. You know, it takes a board, it takes folks working close together. You don't always agree with one another, but you work close together, and that's what we have right now. We have a great village board that works closely, that knows the issues, that knows that we need this development, that helps lower our property taxes overall. It's making Wheeling a better place. And, you know, I urge you to vote for Dave Vogel, who's not here today, Joe Vito, and myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Next. Mary Ann, next.
Hi. I want to say thank you, first of all, for you lovely ladies who do this. It's a complete volunteer organization and fantastic. And thanks, everyone, for coming out to hear what we have to say. I am Mary Ann Rodriguez-Lagore. I grew up here in Wheeling. We were one of the first Spanish families in town, so my mom is here with us today, and my dad is super proud that I got to this point to stood up and to do this. I have, I come from a family, civic-minded family. My brothers are police officers, my brother-in-law. I grew up this way. My mom was always in the school district, and living like that, I've always served bad myself. So, I'm excited to do this. I'm excited to be here. It's my first time doing this. One minute. Thank you. I decided to run. When you get signatures, decide to run, there was multiple people, multiple businesses that had asked me to step up, that felt that I would represent the residents in a grand way. And I got a lot out of it already. I learned, there's not a neighborhood I haven't been in. On a daily basis, I interact with my patients, that are business owners, residents, and I get to hear their concerns, and I would appreciate and love the opportunity to have that direct connection with staff to address some of those things that people are concerned with. But anyway, vote Mary Ann Rodriguez-Lagore. I'm not a politician, but I'm just, I'm just here to serve. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joe, two minutes, opening statement.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Joe Vito. I'm a trustee with the Village of Wheeling. I was appointed to the board in 2015 and then won an election in 2015 as well, and I'm running for reelection now. I'm an attorney, and I've lived in the village since, I think, 2006. My wife will demand me that I don't remember the exact year. But we bought our first townhouse together in Wheeling, and then we bought a house after that in Wheeling, and we're raising our family here. I think every election is always a referendum on the incumbents, and we're the incumbents. And so, it's a simple question. Is Wheeling better off than it was four years ago, and does it look better in the future? I think the unequivocal answer to that is yes. Wheeling has a lot of good things going on, a lot of development underway, a lot of investment in our community, and we need to keep that going, and we need to move forward and keep Wheeling vibrant. On a personal note, the greatest thing about being a trustee is actually the people of Wheeling. And I'm looking out at the crowd now. I wouldn't know Henry, Dave, Jim, Mary, Mark, Sherry. I wouldn't know any of these people if I wasn't on the village board. It was getting to be a part of the community. Stacy, too, I see there. So, just getting to be a part of the community, being involved, is the most important part of being on the village board for me. And I work hard every day on the board to try to make Wheeling the best community to live in. So, I hope you keep the incumbents in. I think we've been doing a good job. Vote for me, Ray Lang, and Dave Vogel.
Great. Thank you. Asher, two-minute opening statement.
Hi. I would also, sorry. I'd also like to thank the Legal Women Voters for hosting this event and for everyone for attending. My name's Asher Horker. I'm 24 years old and a lifelong Wheeling citizen. I am also a student at the John Marshall Law School. I'm qualified to be a trustee, and I believe that I would do a great job representing everyone in this town because I've spent my whole life getting an up-close and personal view of local politics. I've consistently educated myself on issues concerning our village. I've spent the last few years preparing for a campaign just like this one by earning a degree in political science and attending law school in order to immerse and educate myself on the subject matter. I had the unique experience of growing up on a farm in a suburb where I learned that there's no such thing as can't. Like, anything broken can always be fixed, and I've witnessed firsthand the hard work of interested people ensures any issue can be resolved. From a young age, I was encouraged to be independent, confident, and solution-oriented, and those are all factors that I would like to apply to a position on the local village board in Wheeling. I was involved in peer jury, which was a group of hand-selected students from District 21 and 214 that allowed juvenile first-time offenders a jury of their peers and a second chance before establishing a criminal record. I believe that this experience both tested and shaped my moral compass, and I live my life by the phrase "be the change that you wish to see in the world." By running for village trustee, I hope to be a part of the next generation of Wheeling politics and to encourage a new generation of voters. I'd like to represent hope rather than prolong any unrequired fear. This town deserves representation that keeps its citizens' best interests in mind, and by voting for me, you'll be doing just that. Thank you for having me again.
Great. Thank you. Deb Wilson, two-minute opening statement.
Thank you, ladies, for having this forum. It's so important that we gain access to the people, and having a forum to do something like this, I'm very appreciative of that. My name is Deborah Wilson. I am a longtime Wheeling family. My family moved here when I was four years old, first living in Dunhurst, and then my parents just never wanted to take us out of District 21 schools. They loved District 21. And so, we, every time our family grew bigger, another child, we just went to a larger home in another subdivision. So, I've been here a long time. My parents were also very civically-minded. For those of you Wheeling historians, if you remember Sheila Schultz, that picture in the newspaper of her sitting on the back of that white convertible, that was my dad's convertible. So, we've been attending meetings, my parents and myself, for many, many years. I moved back here. I grew up here. I graduated from Wheeling High School, and I've returned. My teaching career no longer teaches, so I wanted to come back to my hometown. And sir, I'm very civically-minded even in my public employment. I was a public school teacher, and I believe that my direct communication with Representative Marty Morland was in part what brought him to that fantastic legislation that requires transparency for all public employees who are let go due to sexual harassment allegations. Those settlements must now be made public. So, I was privileged and honored to serve my fellow colleagues in that way in the school district where I used to teach within his, within his district. I was, as a public school teacher, I was entitled one reading teacher, master's degree from National Lewis, and I collaborated with many teachers for the response to intervention. And I'm very, I'm very good at that. My biggest honor, I think, though, was being asked by a principal who had heard about me when she was the extended-day kindergarten coordinator for Spark for our school district and had chose me to come to her school because of my collaboration with the teachers, extended-day teachers that, I think, they were previously non-responsive, and so I stepped up and did that.
Good. Thank you. All right. We'll start with the first question. We'll start with you, Mary Ann, and then we'll rotate down so Ray will answer it last. What is your position on pension reform? Position on pension reform. One minute.
That is a great question. So, Illinois, the pensions are supposed to be 100% funded, and there was some disagreement whether or not it needs to be. The village manager on that specific subject had spoken about that, that if the village was going out of business, then yes, it had to be 100% funded. I have two brothers that are police officers. I believe they earn their pensions, and I think that 100% funded by the deadline that Illinois has set is not exactly where we need to be with this, not exactly where we need to be. But they should be funded. They had talked about this many times, so my feeling on that is that unless the village is going out of business, then it needs to be 100% funded.
All right. Thank you. Joe, your position on pension reform?
Thanks. Pension reform has to come at the state level to be realistic about it. The pensions, we are mandated to give pensions to our firemen and policemen. We cannot, if we have a new police person come in, man or woman, to sign up, we can't say, "Mr. or Mrs. Police Person, we are now going to put you in a 401K." We have to give them the pension that the state mandates, and that's where the problem resides. And Elaine Enkritz, the former representative, had some pension reform that she had pushed through, and that was ruled unconstitutional. So, pension reform really is a bigger issue, and we can handle it at the village. And what we need to do as village representatives is use our ties with the state reps to continue to push for pension reform, to somehow reform the system so it's no longer mandated that we have to give these full pensions that allow firemen and policemen to retire with 75% of their salary with COLA increases, increases for the rest of their life. So, it's really more of a state issue than it is a local issue.
Great. Thanks, Joe. Thank you. All right. Asher?
And, audience, I'm not trying to be rude, but given that we've got basically four or five minutes per wave of questions, if we let everybody go over by two or, you know, a couple seconds here and a couple 15, 20, there, all of a sudden, we're only going to be able to get six or eight. So, take a breath and keep going. Asher, your position on pension reform?
I agree with Mr. Vito about how it's kind of more handled at a state level than it would be at the local level. And I also agree that while it is more of a state-level situation, we as trustees or as citizens of this town could put more pressure on representatives at these higher levels to make more of an effort to kind of regulate pensions. And I guess that's really...
Great. Thank you. All right. Deb, position on pension reform?
Yes, we have to respect the state constitution. However, I believe that the Tier Two and Tier Three options that the state is proposing will bring about some change. I, I got the, the village manager had intriguing a solution to this that I actually, I hope he pursues. He had suggested combining the various fire and police pensions to eliminate the administrative costs, that it would be more efficient. There's different arguments on either side of that, but it's a viable option. We, Illinois has more governments, more bodies of government, you know, the many other states, so streamlining that into, you know, making it one system, I think, could cut a lot of costs. But I am a complete advocate for, for those who already do their pensions, to absolutely move toward fully funding, which I actually joined this board in their efforts. They've showed a lot of efforts to continue moving up toward that, the state mandate to achieve that goal by the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ray, your position on pension reform?
Well, pensions are, if you look at our budget figures and you look at your property tax bill, you see quite a huge number of pension dollars on that bill. And so, yeah, it's obviously a real issue, and Joe is spot-on. It needs to come from the state. Wheeling just can't do it locally. We have to do the same thing across the board. Every community, every county, and so on across the state has to do the same thing. It's got to be done the same way. Definitely something to, that has been promised to these folks, and if you change it drastically right now, it'll, you'd be hard pressed to get another police officer or fireman to work here again, public works, school teachers, and so on. So, it's something that definitely needs to be looked at at state level. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Joe, we'll start with you. What's your position on airport expansion? Position on airport expansion?
Yeah. As for airport expansion, this is a controversy that doesn't want to seem to die. We have talked about this just endlessly, and if I seem a little agitated, I am, because it keeps coming up no matter how many times President Horker's here says unequivocally, "We are not going to expand the runway or vote to expand the runway." My position is clear. I'm not for runway expansion or expanding the airport. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Asher, airport expansion?
I am also not for airport expansion, and I'm also honestly kind of sick of hearing about it because it's a non-issue. The village president of Wheeling, the mayor of Mount Prospect or Prospect Heights, and the board of directors at the airport just released a press release, literally, what, two weeks ago, last week, stating explicitly that there would be no airport expansion going on. And before that, any discussion of expansion was just that. It was just a potential, it was a what-if. It was not absolutely ever an issue to be something that people should be afraid of, but because some people wanted to make it an issue, they did. So, it's a non-issue, and if it were an issue, I would not be for expanding the airport.
Great. Thank you. Deb, airport expansion?
Well, airport runway expansion was a small component of the larger master plan. I met with airport officials individually to learn about that and had found that the master plan can indeed be a success. We can obtain the federal grant money by implementing portions of the master plan that would involve just building more hangars or other, other facilities like that without expanding the runway. I did, I did have that meeting prior to the last board meeting, so I was not the, I was, there was more than one candidate that did actually reach out to the airport. I'm very proud of my efforts with the subcommittees for Citizens Against Runway Expansion. I galvanized people from various communities and neighborhoods, and I think that those efforts that I did with CARE is what actually compelled the current board to take their stand because also public statements said that it was inappropriate for them to make, take a stand against runway expansion previous to this, but they had a change of mind, and I'd like to think it's because of my efforts with CARE.
Great. Thank you. Ray, airport expansion?
So, I'm on the airport board, some of you know that, and the original part of the master plan was to study, similar to a comprehensive plan that a village, any village does, to see how to make the airport run up, run better, safer. And the FAA suggested that we do an unconstrained plan, and that means look at runway length. And so, it was looked at by, through our consultants. The consultants really did not have a solid plan. I prefer shifting the runway as opposed to expanding it, and there's a, there is a possibility of corner-to-corner shift, where you can move noise actually away from folks that are really having issues as opposed to, to expanding it. Airport expansion is definitely off the table at the airport, not going to happen, and at this point, we're looking at sound remediation for homes in the area.
Is it appropriate a time to ask for rebuttals to that statement?
We're not doing rebuttals.
Okay.
And so...
Certainly.
It's, it's a forum rather than a debate. All right. Mary Ann, you're the last person. Airport expansion?
Airport expansion. So, there was, I have information with me if anyone would like to get it afterwards. There was a letter in 2012 that the airport wrote to Springfield Aeronautical Division saying the communities wanted a feasibility study. After reading that, the expansion plan was on the airport website itself. I have all of that with me if anyone would like to say, to take a look. I am so glad that they finally took it off the table. I think it was a little bit too late. The entire community was stressing out. I decided, I love the airport. I bought my house by the airport. But seeing all the stress with the community, I decided myself to go help collect signatures just to get a referendum question. This, that came up twice in Mr. Lang's first term. He, in the Journal of Topics, he was for, he would consider expansion. So, this has been something that's been on the books, on the website. It was not fear-mongering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And so, we'll go ahead. Asher, we'll start with you. Our third question. What do you consider good about a TIF district, and what do you consider bad about a TIF district? So, staying focused on TIF districts. Asher, start with you.
I consider, one of the best things that I consider to be about TIF districts is the fact that it does ensure that there is financing for that specific area. It pretty much guarantees that that, that specific district or districts will have financing for improvement. And at the same time, what's bad about that is that that money is then stuck specifically in that district, so it's not really movable to be used in a way that can be beneficial to another parcel. But either way, it's, it's good and bad for the same reasons, because the money stays where it stays.
Great. Thank you. Deb, good and bad about TIF districts?
I think they are a very effective tool for bringing about developments that would otherwise be impossible. That being said, I think they need to be used judiciously with the other taxing bodies in mind, and I see the board moving toward refunding a lot of those surpluses, so I'm glad to see them moving in that direction. I think that whenever you use TIF, matters of social justice have to be paramount because I think it's very important that everybody be treated equally. I would also add that transparency in the contracts for these developers should be available to the public so that the public can effectively communicate with their elected officials to let them know if they agree with the terms of those contracts. That being said, I'm thrilled about our Starbucks and the town center going up, and I think it's a shining light in the village of Wheeling, so...
Great. Thank you. Ray, good and bad TIF districts?
Well, TIFs are a necessary evil nowadays. There was once a time where developers used to pay communities to locate within their community. A shopping center would come in, or a neighborhood would come in, big developer would put aside land for a school or a park or something like that. It's all changed. Now, developers rely on TIF dollars to build. But, TIF in Wheeling has changed the face of Wheeling. Milwaukee Avenue, for example, there was a fence company that was generating $60,000 in property taxes. Now, that Prairie Park location is over $1 million in property taxes generated for Wheeling. So, that's all-new incremental taxes for the village. Same thing, almost the same, same exact thing for the Westin as well. A necessary evil. We have five TIFs, and one is expiring this year.
Great. Thank you. Mary Ann, good and bad about TIF districts?
The good is Wheeling is expanding fantastically. I believe that we have a strong economic development team that utilize this nicely. The TIF is ending. What Wheeling is, five TIFs, we, half the time is TIF. At this point, I wouldn't move forward. I would not approve a TIF in a dis, in an area unless there was some solid information. We need to see how all of this works for us. The TIFs have turned the Westin, they turned the town center, excellent. The last budget meeting, the finance staff said, "We're in a good place. We pretty much, we can say no." The last developer did not even ask for money between that and the six B's. I wouldn't approve a TIF right now because our taxes are, you know, the levies are all the same. Our taxes are very, very high, and what we have is working for us, and I would just encourage more retail development in our, thank you, in our stuff.
Great. Thank you. And Joe, we'll end with you. Good and bad TIF districts?
Yeah, the good with TIF districts is it's an economic tool that we have utilized... that we have utilized to spur most of the development in our town. If you look at Fresh Farms, the Weston, Bram, Prairie Park, the town center, it's just been an economic tool. The bad is it's just basic understanding of TIF districts. So what happens is the property tax level is frozen for all the other taxing bodies like the building that we're in here. But the way that we kind of remediate that is by giving surpluses back to the other taxing bodies that aren't getting tax revenue from the frozen TIF level. I think overall, they're more good than they are bad. But they do, as Deborah said, need to be used judiciously. And I think that we have in the village. We spurred a lot of development with a lot of sales tax generating revenue. And we're going to see more as the town center comes underway. So there's always good and there's always bad. But TIFs on the whole, I think they have been good for the town. Thanks.
Good, thank you. All right, your fourth question, Deb, we'll start with you. Are there any future plans to help the city be more environmentally friendly? Any plans afoot to make the city more environmentally friendly?
To clarify that question, are you talking about plans that I would have or plans that the village already has in place?
Are there any plans to help the city be more environmentally friendly?
Again, I come back to transparency. I think the rock crusher, the Orange Crush LLC has placed very, a move that was which is a shoe-negotiating tool in order to move in order to make room for the town center. It is really close to residential. And that's just brutal. So I, holding them accountable, I think, before moving and using my voice as a trustee to really challenge my colleagues if I were to be fortunate enough to be elected to the board to consider those things before moving forward and come up with alternative solutions.
Great, thank you.
And I love the footpath, I love the footpath here that allows us to enjoy our environment.
All right, thank you. All right, Ray, future plans to make the city more environmentally friendly?
We just renegotiated a contract with Waste Management and it involves now for a few cents more, basically a month, to pick up environmental, electronic waste, excuse me. And so that's a service that they'll provide as well now as opposed to waiting once a year to remove an old TV set or something big electronic item. They'll do it on a case-by-case basis, so it's a simple phone call. I'm all for any other kind of environmental changes. I drive an electric car now and it's great. And my other car is a hybrid car. So doing what I can locally, I think we all need to try to solve some of those problems ourselves. And I certainly am all for it and up for any kind of way to, you know, make the environment a safer place. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mary Ann?
Can you just repeat the question?
Any future plans to help the city be more environmentally friendly?
I love that question. Health concerns, that's what I base my life on, basically. We have multiple trucking companies, we've got the airport. We have USA Pollen, we do have waste management. Pace is coming. Even though they're clean burning, it's still going to add to the congestion. So to alleviate some of the congestion issues would be key at some point. And then to put a max on what we let into town. We have FedEx, we have multiple industries. And yes, we need trucks and we have the train. But I would look towards putting a cap on how many more trucking companies that we're going to let in this town that recently came this past year. And not everybody was against it, which didn't make any sense. It was not giving any money, any tax dollars, any jobs to this town. So that's still on the table, multiple areas of this town. I would like to see a cap on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Joe, any future plans to help make Wheeling more environmentally friendly?
Other than what trustee Lang had talked about with our new waste management contract, the only thing I would add to that is I personally tried to look into getting lawn pickup a little bit extended into December. But to be honest with this question, I don't think Wheeling's a huge polluter that has some major environmental problems. I mean, everybody can always be a little more environmentally conscious. But the reality is I don't think pollution is a big issue facing the village. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And Asher?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Are there any future plans to help the city be more environmentally friendly?
Personally, I think to make Wheeling more environmentally friendly for my aspect, if were I to be elected, I would be interested in potentially implementing some sort of incentives for more environmentally friendly sources of power such as solar panels or maybe even little wind turbines if they're small enough. And also asking new developers or people who are interested in building in Wheeling to have a higher standard of care when their environmental impact was kind of evaluated for the property they were to be using. So to make Wheeling more environmentally friendly, I would be interested in seeing what we could do for the citizens and what the citizens could do for themselves, I guess.
All right, thank you. All right, Ray, we'll start with you. Fifth question. What's the biggest challenge facing Wheeling? Biggest challenge to face Wheeling?
I think one of the things that is on everyone's mind is taxes and how to keep taxes at bay. You know, to live in the village, the actual village portion of taxes that go to your tax bill from the village of Wheeling is about 10 to 12% right now. And, you know, we need to build our economic base much further to kind of offset some of that. We're doing it in our industrial parks. We need to do it in more commercial as well. Retail is a tough call because retail is really on the way out right now. But we're bringing in quality restaurants, we're bringing in quality developments. I think that's all going to help overall with at least maintaining our tax base. Lowering is not going to happen, most likely. But at least it'll be maintained. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann, biggest challenge facing Wheeling?
Our sales tax revenue is about the same as it was 10 years ago. The town center will change some of the demographics that are coming here. I would approve retail with solid plans, different businesses. Recently, we have four gaming cafes that are going to be on the same block. I would have said no to that last one, it's two doors over from the other one. And leave those spaces, leave that availability to higher-end retail. That's a huge issue with Wheeling, it's kind of stale. It's been the same as it was. To revitalize Lynn Plaza, to revitalize Dundee and 83 over there, do something with the Kmart site. These places need to be filled and with quality projects.
Great, thank you. Joe, biggest challenge facing Wheeling?
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge facing Wheeling is the biggest challenge that faces every village in state, which is pensions and benefits that have to be paid under state law. We just cannot keep pace with the benefits that we have to pay. We have to raise the levy every year to make sure we have a balanced budget. And unless there's some type of pension reform at the state level, something's going to break at some point. And so it's not particularly Wheeling, it's a state issue. And the only way to do it is to redraft the legislation to allow for defined contribution pension plans instead of defined benefit plans, which is what we have now. So that's the biggest crisis that faces us. 80% of our budget is for personnel and benefits. So if we can get that under control, that would be a huge challenge that we could tackle. Thanks.
Great. Asher, biggest challenge facing Wheeling?
I would say that the biggest challenge facing Wheeling right now is it's kind of double-sided because we do have a lot of new residential development coming in, which is great because it means that we'll have more citizens and it's a great town to live in. But along with the new people coming in, the new citizens, we're also going to need to kind of put more of a weight on commercial and retail development just so we can bring in more of that taxable revenue so we don't have to raise any kind of taxes for the people who already live here just to ensure that we have a stable source of income to continue working and functioning the way that Wheeling has been, so.
Great, thank you. Deb?
Yes, if anybody's been following my public comments at the mic the last couple of years, I've been very active. I obtained a graph from the village of Northbrook and it shows that in 2008, our taxes were right smack dab in the middle of 26th adjacent and nearby villages. And now the last publication, we are second to the highest. So the way I, and the way I would like to see that address is with retail, with the brick-and-mortars, that they're gone. My neighbors upstairs, these young kids get their light bulbs delivered by UPS. So I would love to see some of these big properties like the Sam's Club to be converted into a distribution center, maybe for Amazon. It would bring in jobs to make use of the buildings that we already have and to kind of follow the trends of where the retail is going. It's on your phone, it's not the person-to-person contact anymore. So I think that that would be a great way to increase our revenue. The other, yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mary Ann, we're going to start with you with the sixth question. How will you make yourself available to your constituents?
That is a fantastic question. I see, I would give out my personal email and I would take in all the votes before any approval comes in so it's not just here what I think. It should, true representation is as a whole, what's best for the community. That's a great question, I saw my entire life communicating, advocating. I work with residents on a daily basis, different from every single different section of town. I would accept them emailing me right before every single meeting, give me their two cents, ask me questions, bring me their concerns. I'm open to that and I've decided to make myself available to scrutinize and to be open and to speak for those who need help with that.
Great, thank you. Joe, how will you make yourself available to your constituents?
Yeah, over the past four years, I think we've, as a village board, have all been available. I don't know of an email or a call I didn't respond to and I always will unless it becomes consistent and harassing like sometimes some of the village residents will do, one of them's at this table. But other than that, I will always respond to somebody if they have a legitimate question that they want a legitimate answer to and if they're not using it for some type of harassment, we're always around to answer. Thanks.
Great. Asher?
I would make myself available the same way I do for any of the friends that I have now. I am, my phone is always, you know, open for phone calls. I make sure to call people back, even text me because, you know, sometimes you don't want to talk to somebody on the phone or sometimes an email might seem like it would take too long to respond to. But I always respond to emails, texts, phone calls, even Facebook or other social media sites. If anyone ever needed to reach me, I would probably only ever be about 10 minutes away.
Great, thank you. Deb, how will you make yourself available?
I am happy to, the benefit of no longer working is I have wide availability. I've already had residents reach out to me through my Facebook page and a private email apart from the village, I think, is a good way to make myself available. I think that the success of my advocacy for those people who have reached out to me has been widespread in a compliment I just got from a business owner recently that you're making a big difference because they're now requiring me to do a competitive bidding, which is near and dear to my heart for the taxpayer, competitive bidding on matters that previously I wasn't required to do for my latest project. So I'm happy to provide also my literature, my cell phone number as well.
Great, thank you. All right, question number seven, let's start. Oh, I'm sorry, Ray, please. We want to make you available.
Thank you. Folks reach out to me all the time. I, with issues, whether it's waste management not picking something up, like a sofa or something like that. And I'm glad to kind of help facilitate something like that. I got an email just yesterday from a resident asking about TIF. And I could explain a certain amount of it and I did. But then his follow-up question got a little bit more involved and detailed. And so I forwarded that on to our Economic Development Director and said, "Can you please give me, you know, a very good lesson in, for this resident, on TIF and answer his questions?" So I have a great staff to rely on to get a solid answer. And I've done that several times. And that's how we problem-solve in the village. If you listen to residents, you turn it over to staff who are really doing the day-to-day work for the village. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Joe, we'll start with you. What will be your priorities if you're elected?
My priorities will, my priorities will be the same that they have been for the past four years, which is fiscal responsibility. We've passed four years of balanced or surplus budgets. I will never vote for an unbalanced budget that doesn't pay for itself. I think it's irresponsible. We have the headwinds that I've talked about already with the pensions that we can't control. But the things that we can control, my number one priority is to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. I think we have been over the past four years and I know that we will be if you keep the village board together. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Asher, priorities if elected?
My priority is if I were elected would be to kind of maintain a basis of lawmaking based on facts rather than how we kind of feel about something. I would be very heavily involved in making myself fully aware of all aspects of a problem before I vote on any kind of a solution for it just to be sure that what I'm talking about is actually what's happening and not just the way that I felt about it. I want to make sure that every aspect of whatever the project is at hand is, in my understanding, just before I make any decisions for the town. Because I want to make the best decisions to affect the most people for the best, for the people.
Great, thank you. Deb, priorities if elected?
Yes, my priorities would be to continue to make certain that we are spending money in accordance with established public policy. I would oppose what is going on right now with many lawsuits that we could not and should not win right now. We are spending money to fight a lawsuit for Freedom of Information Act request asking for the electronic key card swipe to the village manager and economic developer, which I think the taxpayers are right to know what time they show up for work. I think we're going to lose it. It's against the Edgar County Watch Service, Lovey &amp; Lovey, the largest successful whistleblower law firm in the city, arguably if not the country. And retaliatory discharge of an officer, Commander Benbow, who was terminated for honoring the Freedom of Information Act request. Lovey &amp; Lovey only takes things like contingency. And we're going to lose that lawsuit, we're going to lose it big. And our board is approving of that, those expenditures to fight those, I believe, yes. So a waste of the public dollar.
Thank you. All right, Ray, your priorities if elected?
Well, I will continue to listen to both sides of the story before I make a decision. And, you know, I won't go into the village meetings on Mondays and already have my mind made up on something. There's two sides to it. There's listening to either a resident or a developer to see if it's right for Wheeling. I also will push for economic growth in this town. And we have a lot of open areas. We have, Kmart has finally lowered its price. So now it's a little bit more reasonable for a developer to come in and perhaps a new development to come into that place. Things that we need. I will, I push for Boston Fish Market to come in. Took me three years to work on Boston Fish Market. But they spent probably north of $5 million to buy and rehab that property. And it's going to be a great restaurant for years and years to come. Things like that is what I'll continue to do.
Great, thank you. Mary Ann, what are your priorities if you're elected?
Transparency and being available to the residents. I would like more of an informal, maybe quarterly, "Let's have coffee with the trustees or tea with the trustees," would be great. You know, sometimes it's nerve-wracking for a resident who has a concern to get, go to the board. They're told immediately that it's not time for debate or discussion. They have a concern... have a concern, they had to figure out how to get there and they would like some questions answered. Residents have great ideas on top of that. I, that would be one of my first things. I would love to have a quarterly meeting with the residents in an informal manner and let them, let them come to me, tell me what they, what they want, what their concerns are. Economic growth is huge. We need to fill our retail with good quality retail.
Great. Thank you. Asher, this will be the last question and then we'll go into one-minute closing statements. So Asher, question, starting with you. How are you different than the rest of the candidates? How are you different?
I'm different from the rest of the candidates because I, although a lot of candidates did grow up in this town, I grew up very involved in the politics in this town. I've been paying attention since probably 2000, since I could basically read, as far back as I can remember, Monday nights meant watching village meetings. And as far as I'm concerned, that means that I've been spending like 18 years paying attention to what's been going on in this town. I'm also different because I am younger than the rest of the members on this board, which means that I have a little bit different of a view or point of view from what they see and I will be around for a long time in this town to see the results of the actions that I take on the board. So.
Thank you. Deb?
Would you be kind enough to repeat the question? Thank you.
How are you different than the rest of the candidates?
I am tenacious in my research. I would have also been in support of changing the direction of the runway if it were to be possible, about the company who makes the EMOS at the end of the runway that stops planes from overrunning the runway. It's no longer in business, so there is no way to safely redirect that, to tear it up and redirect it, to make any changes to the runway without putting residents in harm way. I do my homework. I'm tenacious to the rule of law and to make circumvent private, public resources are used only for private business and I believe in being good is most important over being nice and sometimes you have to challenge the incumbents in order to get them to comply with law.
Great. Thank you. Ray?
Thank you. I consider myself a team player. I work, I'm one trustee on the village board and one trustee has to work with the other trustees on a day-to-day basis. And we may not always agree and we certainly don't always agree, but we walk out of there at the end of the meeting as friends, as colleagues, and that's how it should be. I work on the issues that serve the many, not the few. I think it's important that we have, that all residents are covered on certain issues as opposed to a pocket or a neighborhood or so on. You have to really look at the entire community, not just little pockets here and there and try to solve those problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann, how are you different than the rest of the candidates?
I have strong communication skills. I believe in communication and education. When things come up before the board, I'll give you an example, the staff made an announcement that they were going to be ticketing people who parked on the street. I had many patients who were very upset when they got a ticket, but they didn't know about it. If that would have been a simple solution if I was on the board, I would have said, hey, reach out to Harmony Village, shoot them an email, then they shoot a mass email. Every single neighborhood, it has a Facebook group or they have a means of communicating and I think we need to communicate with the residents better, other than hoping that they watch Monday night meetings or follow that. To get a master list, get it together, communicate with the people. Avalon Sienna neighborhood, they were upset, they didn't get all their streets done. I've been putting out fires for a while. I said, just be patient. They ran out of money, they're getting it, they're getting there. I just believe in strong communication directly with the residents.
Great. Thank you. And Joe, how are you different than the rest of the candidates?
Yeah, I was honored to get the Daily Herald endorsement and they endorsed me specifically for my independence and they said I'm an independent trustee and I don't think there can be anything more differentiating than independence. If I'm reelected, I will continue that independence, make decisions based upon the merits. There's often been six to one votes, we're on the lone trustee out there, but as Trustee Lang said, the great thing about this village board is that no matter what's going on during a meeting, we always shake hands afterwards and we always get along. So I will continue my independent position as a trustee, but I will continue the camaraderie with the village board. I think it's important to have a voice of independence there. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. We'll now go into a one-minute closing statement. We'll go in reverse order. We'll start with Deb Wilson and so a one-minute closing statement, then Asher, then Joe. We'll work this way.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
First, I'd like to apologize for coming a moment late. I have an extraordinary out-of-state family medical situation that I was alerted to just a moment, very shortly before I arrived, so thank you for your kindness and understanding of that.
Can I take a minute and maybe defer?
If you could, please. Yeah, could you come back to me?
Asher, would you mind?
Yeah. In closing, I would just like to reiterate that I grew up in the politics in this town. I have paid attention as long as I can remember and it has never occurred to me not to be invested in politics. I've always been very interested in doing the best amount of good for the most people possible, which is why I've gone to law school and why I got a degree in political science, because I'm interested in knowing how to do the best for the most people possible and I want to make sure that I do that right. I'm a lifelong citizen of Wheeling and I'm very, very interested in continuing to live in this town and do well for this town and I think that as a, being elected as a trustee would mean that I could continue doing all of the good that I would like to do and then some.
Great. Thank you. Deb, you ready?
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I am very pleased to have served the community these last two years to bring our local board into compliance with law. Much of the private expenditures of the public resources have stopped because of me and my advocacy. I believe that my largest concern with the sitting board was the contempt that they showed for the people in their vote on inauguration day of our current village president when they voted to name it after the previous village president. I think that goes against their claim that the cohesiveness is the most important thing. That certainly was a good way to welcome in somebody new. I do have a thick skin myself to be able to speak independently, as you've seen me do, up against tremendous opposition from the current board. My main concern is that regardless of how good or how pleasant or how much they get along, is each of these members voted to approve of the public use of the private credit card every month when they voted on the approval of bills.
Thank you. All right. Joe, one-minute closing statement.
Yeah, I think that, you know, as I opened, it's a referendum always on the incumbents and you just have to ask yourself, is Wheeling better than it was four years ago? And I think it's unequivocally yes. If you drive around town, all of the development that's going on, all of the fiscal responsibility that we've showed over the past four years in making this town a better place to live and I want to keep that continuing. And when you hear from the challengers here today, none of them are really throwing any bombs at us because there's really no bombs to throw. I think everyone's kind of cohesive, even at this forum, because the reality is Wheeling is doing well. And I think, I understand why they would want to be on the board, I want to be on the board. It's a good board to be on. We get along together, we do well together. Some of the trustees and the village president are here today and I think the best thing for Wheeling is to keep this board together and keep it moving forward. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Mary Ann?
Yes. Can you repeat the question? I was listening.
This is the closing.
Okay.
One-minute closing statement.
I decided to make myself available. Read the packet materials. I've paid attention for the past 10 years of the planning commission as well as the Board of Trustees. Wheeling is growing, it's fantastic. This has been in the works for over a decade and it is snowballing in a fantastic way. I am naturally a lover, I appreciate being there for people and I am open to anyone coming to me. I've put out many fires in the past, just by education, knowing what's going on. I just make myself available to the residents of Wheeling to be the representative that they deserve. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Ray?
Well, I'm very proud of the direction that this village has taken over the last 10 years, you know. Wheeling has grown like never before and that growth is sustainable for years and years to come. There are so many areas, if you think the Town Center is huge, the piece of land that will, that can be developed on the west side of the tracks from there is twice as big and that along with the Kmart property and the new development at Wingspan, which is by Jack London, there is nothing but a great future for the Village of Wheeling for sure. I'm proud to be part of that, I'm proud that I'm on a great board, current board that is part of that as well. Dave Vogel can't be here tonight, so I am throwing his name out there. Joe Vino is a great guy to work with and I think they'd say the same about me, so.
Great. Thank you. Why don't we give our candidates a round of applause? I was reminded, early voting begins tomorrow and I'm told that the closest location here is 199 North First Street here in Wheeling, so early voting. So please, closing remarks.
A huge thank you to our moderator, Ms. Catherine Williams, for volunteering her time today to moderate our forum. I also want to thank the many volunteers from the League of Women Voters of Burlington Heights, Mount Prospect, Buffalo Road, Elk Row Village, Prospect Heights and Wheeling for volunteering their time as well. League is a 100% volunteer organization. We could not put on this free program for the community without these volunteers or the support of the Indian Trails Library for use of today's space. And finally, thank you, the audience, for coming and participating in today's forum. Thank you.[1795.15][1795.15][applause]